Okay, we're both recording and streaming. I'm going to disappear, but let me know if you need anything. I'll be listening.
Thanks, Terry.
All right, it's seven o'clock, right?
It is.
Are we waiting on anybody else?
Uh, no, but I should inform you that Mr. Bowers did call a little while ago and left me a message that he had an emergency and may not make the meeting.
Understandable.
There's only, we don't have a quorum yet, right?
Uh, I believe we do. We have Ms. Dreisbach, Ms. Halaho, Mr. Parker, Mr. Paul, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Sherlock, and Mr. Jaeger.
I forgot about those, I forgot about the brave souls that are attending in person. I apologize.
So the only one I think we're missing is the mayor, but he might join in still. Who knows?
Okay. It's my understanding the mayor's not coming.
Oh, okay.
I was speaking, speaking to Janet earlier today about TLT things. So I don't know if he called you, but...
No.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and start then, since we have a quorum. All right, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of Monday, August 17th, for the Borough, Morrisville, Borough Council. Can we have a moment of silence and then a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're getting better at that part.
Yes. All right, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ravella. Councilman Bowers. Councilperson Dreisbach?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul? Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Councilman Jaeger?
Here.
Our borough solicitor is here and our borough manager. Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving on to number four, which is announcements and presentations. Do we have any presentations today?
Uh, no presentations, Mr. President, but I would like to request that we could have a very brief executive session at the end of the meeting.
Uh, for what?
Personnel issues.
Okay. All right, move on to five, which is public comment. Do we have any public signed up?
Yeah, that, we're not using that number.
Uh, sure. Uh, did anybody sign up for public comment? Mr. President, there's no public comment, but if you could pause just a second. Apparently, the chief's trying to call in, but doesn't have tonight's number. I don't know how much of this he needs to get in, but I guess give him all of it.
Does he want to do it on the public comment or his police, the chief's report?
I have no idea. He's told me what he wanted to know.
He's not in the audience. He's trying to call in. That's the meeting ID, that's true. Sorry about that.
It's okay. So, so we don't know whether he's trying to call in for public comment or...
Uh, I'm sure it's for his report.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on then. All right, we're gonna move on to six and six A, which is approval of the minutes for the Borough Council regular meeting of June 15th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
I don't...
We're gonna move on to seven, which is finance, seven A, the treasurer's report. Any questions about that? All right, hearing no questions, we're gonna move on to seven B, which is a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills.
Mr. Parker?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Parker, I'm sorry. We had a little background noise in here to close out the treasurer's report. I do have one question. Uh, I did see a charge for legal fees. This isn't a question for the attorney, this is a question for, I think, Scott. I believe the reason for the charge was to go over the concealed carry law for, at a time when there's an emergency. Is that something, what precipitated that to be a necessary conversation?
I believe that was requested of the solicitor's office during the protests that were taken, counter protests that were taking place.
Okay, so they, they were requested to review it and give us a, an opinion on?
Who did?
The attorney. I'm asking who?
No.
Who, who asked the attorney to do the researching? Was that, was that Scott? I'm trying to figure out where the question...
I don't think it was me. Actually, I believe it may have been Mr. Parker.
Yes, it was, as a result of complaints from residents.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was just a question as to whether, whether or not, because of the state of emergency, there were concerns about people with assault-style rifles on Bridge Street, and I received numerous complaints about it, so...
And, and, Mr. Parker, if you would then, since we paid for it, could you give us an understanding of what the answer was, so we know?
I believe there was some confusion as to, uh, what was permitted and not permitted, but I think ultimately the opinion of the solicitor was that the Second Amendment should take precedent over anything else, including the governor's orders.
Okay.
Is that what that background noise was, John, that mic?
Or the, or the, uh, feedback?
Found your mics on the table?
It's this one, yeah. Get the feedback, yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Can you turn it off, Scott?
I can, but then, uh, we're not gonna get the audio of your auditorium here.
Any other questions for the report? All right, seven B, a call for motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any more questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to eight, reports. Eight A is the mayor's report. Has the mayor joined the meeting yet?
The, the mayor had, excuse me, Mr. Parker, mayor has asked me to read a proclamation, so is that, would that be now or later?
I mean, he normally does it, does it during, during his reports if it's not part of the agenda, so...
Okay, so that would be now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, this is a proclamation, there's, there's actually two. Well, the one is about the TLT. I'm gonna read that one first, if you don't mind. "In recognition of September as ovarian cancer awareness month and in support of Turn the Town, Town Teal Awareness Campaign. Whereas ovarian cancer is called the silent disease because its symptoms are often vague, and whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer-related death among women and is the deadliest gynecologic cancers. Whereas if detected in its early stages, survival of ovarian cancer is 90 to 95%, yet the five-year survival rate for the disease is only 28% because it's so difficult to detect early. Whereas raising awareness of this terrible disease is the goal of the TLT Foundation. And whereas Marshall Borough will participate in the Turn the Towns Teal Campaign with teal ribbons placed on downtown trees, structures, and throughout the Marshall Borough community, and Marshall Borough encourages businesses and residents to participate and showcase teal ribbons and now therefore be proclaimed on this day, 17th day of August 2020, the Borough of Marshall declares September as ovarian cancer awareness month and supports Turn the Towns Teal Awareness and Research Campaign." And it's signed by Mayor Ravella. And it's my understanding he will get a copy to you. I, I just wanna say to the public, I appreciate over the years the, the support for this and those who, um, who display the ribbons. It's a long haul for many. And as far as the teal, teal goes, that's, you know, the color that depicts ovarian cancer. We will have a basket, not that I think many people are coming into the borough, but there will be a basket of ribbons down there, as we have in the past, for those who wish to put one on their own home. And if anybody actually wants to help me hang any, that's, that's always appreciated. There are some trees that are lost this year, but we'll find others, try to, to try to find others to put them on. So, again, thank you to council for their support and to, and for the community. I just also have to mention that the local president of this chapter, Jean Chippows, who was, she, she struggled with ovarian cancer for 21 years, and she died last December, but she was the, the driving force behind this and in this, in our area. So, kudos to Jean and her memory. The second one is in recognition of August as Gastroparesis Awareness Month and to promote awareness of this debilitating disorder. I have to be honest, I'm not familiar with this particular disorder. It says, "Whereas gastroparesis, paralysis, commonly known as stomach paralysis, is a debilitating disorder that can lead to malnutrition, dehydration, extreme weight loss, esophageal damage, and other such complications. And whereas gastroparesis is a chronic illness, which according to National Institute of Health estimate affects more than 5 million people in the United States, yes, yet it is little known or understood. And whereas gastroparesis is characterized by sometimes debilitating pain, nausea, and can lead to serious complications such as extreme weight fluctuations, esophageal damage, and dangerous erratic blood sugar levels. And whereas unlike many diseases, there are no early warning signs, testing is not usually performed until significant symptoms have developed, and there are no drugs that effectively treat symptoms. Whereas while sufferers are significantly impacted by chronic symptoms of gastroparesis, the lack of awareness and understanding is one of the largest problems facing patients today. And whereas further research, improved medications, additional treatment options, better support, and hope for a future is needed. And whereas the Gastroparesis Awareness Campaign is working to educate the health community and general public regarding the serious nature of gastroparesis and now therefore being proclaimed on this, uh, I'm gonna say, 17th day of August 2020, the Borough of Marshall recognizes August as Gastroparesis Awareness Month." The, the piece of paper I have in my hand says August 5th, but I read it as August 17th, 'cause that would be this evening. And it's my understanding that some, there are a few residents in town that are struggling with this and had contacted the mayor. So that's the, that, that was the reason for this. Again, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, give me one minute, my phone fell on my computer and I can't see the agenda. All right, uh, we're going on to eight B, which is the police chief's report.
Yeah, I believe he's on the line.
Yeah, good evening, council. This month, I met with, um, a group of residents, probably six. Um, they represented themselves as the Marshall Gats hate and also, um, part of Black Lives Matter. We had a four-hour meeting in the park, um, which they gave me 35 questions that they wanted me to address. Um, I got about through six of them. Um, they, their goal, I believe, is to have a review board for the police department. Um, we really never got to that point. They asked a lot of questions of hiring, um, hiring minorities within the county, the different police departments, the rules of hiring. We went over a lot of directives within the police department. So we did make progress. We had a very nice meeting, um, and I think we should be meeting again in the future. I've encouraged them to participate in our government, come to our meetings, come to the council meetings, and possibly run for some positions, um, so they can really be involved in the day-to-day operations of the borough itself. Um, with that being said, I thought it was a very good meeting, and I'm hoping we're gonna meet in the future. Um, and that's about all I have. If, if someone could include me on the emails for the, the council meeting, so I have a good idea of how we're meeting, I'd appreciate that going into the future. Thank you. Also, you're, also, you're voting on two directives tonight? Those directives are almost identical to what I had submitted to the, um, to the mayor who submitted them to you guys, who I guess went to the lawyers at that point. So I am, I am fine with how those directives finally made it to you guys. So, thank you.
Did you, uh, write a recap of your meeting in the park and what it was?
We can't hear you, Helen.
Is her, is her microphone off?
On that one? No, that's just this.
Okay. Chief, uh, could you write a recap of your meeting in the park and, and forward it to council?
I'm so, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't understand what you said.
She asked if you could write the recap of your meeting with the group you met with in the park and distribute it to council.
I can give it to the mayor, and if he can get distributed to the council, I could do that.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
All right, we're gonna move on to eight C, which is the manager's report.
Thank you. Actually, I don't have a specific report for you tonight. Uh, council gets a packet from my office every week. If you have any question about that material, I'm happy to answer it, uh, unless the council president prefers to do it, in which case I'm happy to yield to him. We did get two notifications of grants today. Ted, did you wanna talk about these, or do you want me to?
Uh, you did, 'cause I was, I only got the emails through my phone, so I haven't had a chance to...
Okay. Well, the first is, we received notice from the Bucks County Commissioners that the borough has been approved for a grant application for the replacement of the roof on the public library, and the amount of $82,750. You'll recall that, I believe it was last year, we were previously awarded a grant from the state for this particular project, and the amount of $52,500. So it looks like, uh, that will be enough to, uh, get the roof project going. The second is, uh, we also received notice today that the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program grant that we applied for, for the Melvin Avenue Basin Improvement, uh, was approved, uh, at today's Commonwealth Financing Authority Board meeting, and that's in the amount of $122,008. So it looks like with that approval, we will finally be able to get started and finish, hopefully, the Melvin Avenue Basin improvements that we've been talking about for, well, at least three years that I've been here, maybe longer than that, I'm not sure. Yeah. Um, I have a couple of personnel matters for you this evening that we'll discuss in executive session, but I also had two new items. Uh, there were bullet points on the agenda for us to chat about tonight. Uh, the first is, there's a move afoot in Bucks County to install electric vehicle charging stations. I shared some information about a state grant program that is encouraging that and actually reimbursing municipalities for, uh, the cost of establishing electrical vehicle charging stations. Uh, in one of your recent weekly deliveries, uh, you'll also be getting an, additional information about it from the state's preferred Co-Stars vendor, um, in your weekly packet this Friday. We've been talking to the Bucks County TMA, which is the Transportation Management Agency, about the possibility of two locations within the borough if, uh, we wanted to move ahead with this. Uh, the first would be the municipal parking lot at Bridge and Pennsylvania Avenue, behind the Stockton Building, and the second would be the parking lot at Williamson Park. I had an opportunity recently to look at, uh, two units that were installed by Middletown Township, uh, near us, and to speak with them about their experience in doing it. So my question is, is there some level of interest by council in moving ahead with something like this? Uh, in which case I will invite a representative of Bucks County TMA and also a representative of the Co-Stars vendor who sells the units to an upcoming meeting to give council a more detailed presentation about it.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Well, I, I'm, for myself, I, I would be interested in having it here in town. We, uh, actually, this has been, this was brought up a few years back, and, um, because Falls had put one in, and when I had inquired about it, they said that it was too close. But that was back before, I guess, the numbers have increased. So is there any, uh, is there anyone that has taken any inventory as to how many vehicles might be in Bucks County or even in Morrisville? And the second question, or, or my suggestion would be, I would think that the municipal parking lot downtown would be safer security-wise than the park itself, um, unless we set up different lighting and security and so forth. But, that was just my two comments.
Uh, I'm not aware if there, if there's an inventory of electric vehicles, uh, that reside in Bucks County. Uh, that would probably be a question for the Bucks County TMA, so that's something that they could answer, uh, if they're able to, uh, if we have them come in for a presentation. I didn't want to waste their time, uh, bringing both of those people in for a presentation to council if there wasn't some element of interest. So I told them I would gauge your level of interest first.
Mr. President, if I might?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, so, two questions. Well, first, I would like to hear more about it. Um, my question, when you were speaking to the other council, um, did anything come up about the cost of ownership? Meaning, I understand they're gonna, they're gonna reimburse the, for putting it together, but obviously somebody's gotta pay the electric, right?
Yes.
Is the process involved? Is there any discussion of what that...
Uh, their experience has been that the cost of the electricity is pretty minimal.
Okay.
Is your, is your light on?
Yeah.
Down at the bar? As we, I am hearing you through the computer.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe it's your mask. Uh, so it's cost of the electricity and it's the cost of, um, I believe there's like an insurance program, you can pay some little monthly charge. If it gets vandalized or run over by a Mack truck, you know, you get a new unit. Uh, so basically, those were the only two costs that they're having to occur on recurring basis.
Can you give us any concept, like, $100,000?
No. But the, the vendor from, um, what's the name of the company? ChargePoint, uh, will be able to explain all that.
If we could ask them to bring in comps to tell us, like, what, what's happening elsewhere in the area, that would be helpful.
Yeah, the, the TMA and, uh, the, the Co-Stars vendor who've been doing this have been doing all of the other locations in Bucks County that have been done, so they've got a great idea of, of how it's going. I mean, the, everywhere from, I think, Bristol Borough to Quakertown, they're, they're dealing with Bucks County municipalities that are doing this.
Right.
And again, I'm not suggesting we do it just to jump on the bandwagon. I mean, you know, is there merit to doing it? Does it, does it add value to the downtown to have one in the business district and to have one at the park for recreational purposes? Um, plus, one of, one of the things that the Co-Stars vendor told me is, most people don't park their vehicle there for five or six hours to charge. It's usually more of a top-off, you know, if they've been out running around or they're, they're, you know, catching a baseball game at the park, they might hook up for an hour while they're waiting, uh, you know, before they go home, that kind of thing.
For me, it's more of a question of, do you support green energy? And that's, that's, as opposed to jumping on bandwagon, that's just Mike's stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you repeat what Mike said? I'm sorry, I'm just very difficult to hear.
Mike, Mike was inquiring about recurring monthly costs, uh, and I explained to him that there's, uh...
It's minimal, yeah.
Yeah, very minimal. It's for electricity and it's for, did that click back on?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was on, love it.
Uh, there you go. And, and for, you know, if you buy the insurance coverage on it, uh, which is very small, uh, you know, in case the, the unit gets damaged or vandalized or hit by a Mack truck, you know, you get a brand-new unit installed, uh, you know, it's covered.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, they, they can get in a lot more detail with us if we wish to have them out, but again, I'm, I'm trying to gauge your level of interest.
I'd like to get more information.
Okay.
I, I have a question, Scott.
Yeah.
Um, this, well, this question would probably be for the representatives of the company, but, uh, would these chargers charge a variety of vehicles or, and the reason I ask is, the Tesla charging stations are all over the country, and I think Tesla basically does everything, like, they come in, they hook it up, and they probably would pay for it, but I'm not sure if a Tesla charger would charge an electric Toyota or, you know, BMW.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I can't speak to that, uh, the issue of compatibility. I would think that at this point, we're, we've reached the point where it's universal, but I, I can't really speak to that. I, I think it would probably be best if we heard from the, the vendor on that. And just so you know, you, you're actually gonna, uh, see a design of this thing in your, in your packet on Friday, but if you've not seen them already, it's a standalone, you know, unit with two cords on either side, so each station, two vehicles to charge simultaneously. And, um, they're about $9,000 to $10,000 apiece. So total, if we did two locations, uh, would be, you know, about $20,000. Uh, but we'd get reimbursed from the state for that, uh, if we were to do it, as long as we got project pre-approved ahead of time, so...
Did you want to tell you how much you're interested in the situation?
Well, they literally just got them installed a couple of weeks ago, so they really don't have a good run rate yet. What I was going to do actually is check with somebody who's had them a little bit longer and see what their experience has been. But I, I think the, the vendor from Co-Stars will probably have more and better detail on, on that that they could offer us, so...
I have another question. I'm not really following this. So, we install this charging machine... So we install this charging machine and we get the state reimbursed. So basically, the installation doesn't cost us anything. The person that's charging their car, is it basically a free charge? Like they pull up to it and they plug in and they get charged for free or?
You have two options. Most of the municipalities have made it free for public use. But at any time, you can switch and there is a very minor fee for the public to utilize it. The thinking is that once you get it installed, if you run it for free for, you know, three or four years and then maybe switch over to a minor charge just to get people used to the idea of it being there and it existing. Plus, it'll show up on, like if you do a search of, you know, vehicle charging stations in the area, the location will show up and whether there's a power station available at that time, it will tell you that as well. But if we were to decide to either charge from the very beginning or switch over to a charge at some point in the future, once it kind of gets seated, whatever revenue that was to generate would help offset, of course, the electricity and the insurance program costs, which I'm told are very minor anyway. So I don't think it should be viewed as a profit center because I don't think.
Mr. Parker, can I have another question for the borough manager? My, obviously, this would be run by electric, right? So it's not a solar unit. We can't depend on solar, right?
Yes.
And I don't know that, how we could tie in, which I'm sure they'd figure it out. But we often talked about tying in electric down in our municipal parking lot so that we could actually have a pay station. So I guess having electric down there, setting up with the electric would all be part of the cost and hopefully it would all be reimbursed, I'm guessing.
Yeah, all the site prep costs would be included in the project cost. But there is electricity at the municipal parking lot because there's parking lot lighting.
Oh, there's lights. There's lights there.
And I'm told that each of these things only needs the electricity required to run the hairdryer in your house. So it's very minimal.
Okay, thank you.
I'm interested in hearing more about it.
Okay. Well, that being said, I will contact them and we will see when we can get them on council's agenda. State. There is a certain amount of time, you know, you can't kind of apply and then drag your preapproval out forever. You do have a certain amount of time with which you need to be timely in getting, you know, buying the units and getting them installed.
But I'm going to defer to one.
No, no. So this would end up most likely being something that we, you know, if we pursue it, would be something that would happen in 2021.
Scott, did you say the amount of electric needed for a common hairdryer?
Yes. They told me that the amount of electricity needed to, for these charging stations to power a vehicle is about equivalent to everyday common hairdryer.
Which seems pretty decent to be able to charge up two cars. But I've known hair dryers to blow the.
Well, it might be a hair dryer per charging station. So it might be two hair dryers for each location.
Not that it's up to us, but I happen to know someone who would be, would welcome the news if the borough had that. So just throwing it out there.
Okay, yes. He does. Yes, double.
Does it need free charging?
Yep. The second item I had for you on the list there was bicycle racks. We've been kicking around the possibility of installing a small, it's actually for like three to five bikes, at the, again, at the municipal parking lot at Bridget, Pennsylvania, also at the public library, also at the parking lot at Williamson Park, three locations. These are very small, low profile. I have a picture here that won't help anybody who's on Zoom, but if you'd like to look, that's, I don't know what it looks like. You've probably seen them around.
The library has one though, right, Scott, already?
Oh, sorry. Mike, did you want to see it? No. Does it? It may, I don't know.
The library does have one already.
I didn't think that it did, so if it does, we'll just take that one off the list.
The library did have one. It's on the right hand.
By the parking lot.
When you're building up the stairs, it's on the right.
Okay. All right, yeah, so if they already have one, we'll just drop them off the list, that's not an issue. So these are about 300 bucks apiece. Council have any feeling one way or another as to installing them and at the locations we've identified?
Just for myself, I think they're a great idea. I don't really have a problem with it. Landmark Towns tried to put them across the town some years ago, but we really couldn't find a, an appropriate place. There was Andrew, you might know him, Andrew Hamilton. He had worked with Landmark Towns to identify some locations, and one of them was the shopping center. We were trying to get the businesses on board also, especially around bus stops. So I think it's a great idea.
Certainly, if a private property owner was interested in having one installed on their property, we would share with them who the vendor is and, you know, put them in touch with each other if they wanted to get one. But we cannot be installing them on private property. We would be doing private property only.
I wouldn't expect that, no. In fact, this program I'm referring to actually had artists, artist students designing them. And they weren't necessarily, you're plain and ordinary. They were of different shapes and sizes. It was a pretty cool idea, but we just don't have that. We don't have that connection or capability right now. But.
Okay, so. Everybody's good with that?
Yes.
I'll work it out with John later and we'll get them ordered and installed. The municipal parking lot, the parking lot at Williamson Park and the public library, except I'm told the public library hasn't already. So it'll be two instead of three. Actually, I thought they did have a Manor Park playground. John, do you remember off the top of your head if they have a playground?
Yes.
If they don't, we.
We have one.
We probably.
We do.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have one.
You have one there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because if not, we could certainly include one as part of the new design for there, but. Okay. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Okay, 8D, I don't believe we have any committee reports, but this is where I'd like the committee chairs to at least give a brief report so that the public, you know, has some information on what the committees are doing as well as the chance for council members to ask questions. All right, we're going to move on to 9, which is action items. We'll move on to 9A, which is a call for a motion to approve entering into a one-year agreement with Hough Associates to collect and submit the 2020 recycling performance grant data for $3,000. Can I have a motion?
So.
I'll second it. Discussion. Mr. Yang.
Okay, Mike? Yeah, my discussion, just so that my colleagues here know, I will be voting no on this, and I'll tell you why. It's, I know it's $3,000 and some people say, oh, that's just minimal. It's not about the money. It's about the fact that our former code enforcement officer used to do this. And it was done in-house without additional money spent. So for that reason, I'll be voting no, but I'm sure it's going to go through. And I understand the need for it, and I do understand that we would never give up the opportunity to get recycling grant money, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I may, Scott, a question for you. With the changes that are going on with recycling, obviously, I would expect that it's going to become lower than it has prior years. Do you see a significant drop off?
No. Unless the state raids the kitty and this program goes away, I see it remaining the same. This has worked fairly well with us because, you know, Hough Associates, this is all they do. They represent most of the municipalities around us and they have access to data that we would never in a million years be able to get. And that's why they've practically doubled our, what we're bringing in in terms of the recycling performance grant, so.
I think the first year you were here, we actually got two years' work because we were behind. And you think that's double for each year because of this. Is that accurate?
Well, I can't, I don't remember which years it was. It always runs a year behind, but we're anticipating $18,000 for 2019 with a $3,000 investment. So I mean, we're, you know, we're clearing $15,000. That $15,000 is almost twice what the borough was receiving previously. It always ranged between like seven and nine and, so I think it's just more consistent this way.
And I believe they, don't they somehow combine us with other municipalities and give you information? I think there's some sharing.
Yeah, there's some sharing of some data. We're in a group, trying to think now. Tom Hough was here that time and did a presentation for us.
Did you say something about consolidating with each town to make each one get a bigger share?
Yeah, the way they do it, they kind of group five or six municipalities together. I think we're in the Yard League group, but don't quote me on that. But yes, your memory is correct. Yep.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment. I do understand the uptick, but there was a time when we were getting $20,000, $24,000.
So those days are over.
Exactly. That's my point. So we were getting a lot of money and then the downturn was actually the downturn in the process itself for a while. So it's not totally on, you know, the person that was submitting it. It was just that there was no money out there at the time. So I'm glad to see that there's more money coming back.
Yeah, the state dramatically changed the program compared to what it used to be some years back, what you're remembering.
Yes, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, no, Nancy.
Motion carries by county right 6-1. Any, I'm sorry, any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to 9B, a call for a motion to approve the LRTA application by, oh, Lord, Vin, filed by Vin.
Vin Chala.
Chala, okay. For 32 Bridge Street, parcel number 24-009-131. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
This gentleman, yeah, I do have a question, I'm sorry. So is he the owner of the entire property or is he just getting this for his portion? But this gentleman has the distillery, right? Or no?
This is the, this gentleman, well, the owner of the property is 32 West Bridge Street LLC. And he is a, one of, what I can only assume would be multiple members of that LLC. He's the one who filed the application.
Okay, so the, so the LLC is filing. But why is his specific name on there, I guess is what I'm saying? Like, just because he's filing it?
He filled out and signed the form.
Okay. I'm not asking my question correctly, I'm sorry. So he is one of the owners, but it's one of the owners of the entire property. It's not broken down. That's what I'm asking.
The entire property, yeah. As far as I know, they're not anything to do with the tenants or the.
Okay, so it's just for the entire property, he's.
Right, they're the property owner.
All right, thanks.
So he's filing on behalf of the LLC?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. 9C, a call for a motion to accept the bid proposal submitted by Republic Services for trash collection services from 2021 through 2025 and to authorize the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Well, it doesn't clarify which one we're using or taking. I mean, shouldn't that be on there or is it not? Like which proposal, I mean?
Well, that's for you to decide tonight.
Oh, okay, all right.
Our recommendation is that we stay with two pickups per week, as we have been.
Okay.
The only reason why we were at the time entertaining the possibility of one pickup per week is if we were going to go automated and use the large, what is it, 95, 96 gallon containers. But none of them did that option and I understand why. But, so unless you want to go to once a week, but I'd suggest.
No.
No, because it's a tip anyway.
Most of the residents still like the twice a week, even if they don't, you know, overindulge. I just wanted to be sure. I didn't know exactly which one it was. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a statement. So I have dealt with the public directly on complaints from neighbors. Their customer service has lots of things to be desired for. I understand they're a trash company and the expectations shouldn't be super high. However, there's been situations, for instance, where somebody would call customer service to find out if an air conditioner had been picked up and that individual was told, yeah, sure, for, I think it was $75 if they were picked up. Meanwhile, in our contract, it's only the items they picked up. So people would call, let me get different answers. I know some of that stuff I worked with because I called them several times and spoke to their management team and some of those things were resolved, but I've got to say, I've never been impressed with them. And I know I'm not alone. I know that other people up here have been impressed with me. Everybody also understands that the requirements are the lowest responsible bidder and responsible bidder is not justified by where I'm happy with their service. But nevertheless, I just wanted to make a statement that I have the utmost contempt for the level of service we got.
And I would have to echo that sentiment. As our borough manager will know, that I have called him numerous times about their service and lack of service. But, you know, we have to take the lowest responsible bidder and here we are.
I don't feel they're responsible.
If I, if I may, for a moment, Mr. President, I can, for whatever it's worth, assure you that the issues and concerns we have here in Morrisville are not unique to us. You know, I know and I'm in touch with the other municipal managers, primarily in Lower Bucks, but also in Central and Upper. And this is not a phenomenon that only plays out in Morrisville Borough.
Not at all.
So.
Mr. Parker? Is someone talking? I'm sorry.
Yes, I asked if I could request a roll call on this.
Oh, but I don't think we did it yet, Mike. Is that Mike?
Yeah, when we vote, I'm asking if we do a mic roll call rather than.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
It's very hard to hear you, Mike. I think it's because your mic is off. I just want, I'd just like to comment that I know that there are, this is not, certainly we can't blame their service on the virus. But I will say that did play into their, who they, their staff. staff, how many people had been sick, how many people they had, didn't have available, and so forth. I can just say, thank God, we're not Philadelphia. Because that's just.
Yeah, if you want to look at garbage collection calamities, just look at what's going on in the city of Philadelphia.
That's just horrific. And I have to say, I talked to Justin about this before, too. And there definitely must be pockets of horrible service. And I think we have to address it somehow, some way. But both he and I have received on occasions from our constituents that they're happy with the service. So, wherever these pockets are, we just have to find them and fix them.
Down here.
Grandview Avenue.
Okay.
Grandview Avenue. I personally have had to call to have my trash picked up the day after the pickup. And there's always, there's always a broken down truck. There's always a personnel issue, so.
When they came in, they guaranteed that was taken care of. They got a whole new line of trucks.
So, that was six years ago, five years ago.
Yeah. Well, I never saw them.
I mean, they're throughout the region, and I'm sure if we go to other municipalities in New Jersey, we'll have the same, we'll hear the same complaints.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we know what it's going to be per household for the new?
We gave you, yeah, we gave you a rough estimate of that in the analysis. But keep in mind, we're, that's not fully loaded yet because we're not done with the sanitation budget for 2021.
Yeah.
So, there, you know, we'll be bringing council a 2021 fee schedule for you to adopt, probably at your October meeting.
Okay.
And that will have the official rates.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Analysis that was provided and excluded to that drop box. But not only what analysis was done, there's a summary that's attached. Do you have that going forward?
Can't hear you. We can't hear these questions. I'm sorry.
... etc. Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Scott, I know, I don't know if it was pertinent or not. I don't know if I needed to know what Helen said, but I didn't hear a word she said. And maybe it's because the mic's on. I'm not sure. Now, if Bob and Eileen are hearing her.
No, I didn't hear. All I said was that I would like an analysis of the garbage. I would just like that there was some written words attached to it with some insights provided.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Keep that muted and just talk. Any other discussion? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
No.
Councilwoman Halaho? Councilwoman Halaho?
She voted yes.
Oh, all right. I can't, can't hear. Councilman Parker?
Mr. Parker?
God, I don't know why, but I can't.
I'm just, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Councilman Paul? I think he said something, but we didn't hear it.
Does he mute it?
Yeah, we're not hearing any audio.
Tell him to unmute himself. He's got a red light.
You might, you might have.
I, he didn't have the red light before, and it still wasn't working. So, I don't know. Maybe it's not working. But it looked like his lips said yes. I don't know.
He wrote yes.
Oh, he wrote yes. Okay. Okay. Councilman Robinson? Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Okay, motion passes. Okay. We're going to move on to 9D, which is a call for a motion to approve the settlement of the tax assessment appeals of Colonial Gardens Partnership LLC for properties located at 490 and 491 Plaza Boulevard, tax parcel numbers 24-001-058 and 24-001-058-001.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion?
We really don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Nope, we don't.
Mr. Parker, I have a question for our attorney. I'd asked about it earlier. We don't have, we don't have any figure attached to this. But he said to check with you, Adam, that it's because maybe it's not completely finalized. And, but we're in the ballpark with regards to the agreement as, as we read it?
Well, the.
No, it's what our financial obligation would be.
Adam, just so you know, Councilwoman Sherlock asked me about this prior to the start of the meeting. And I had informed her that the amounts were in the agreements. However, Scott had indicated to me that the agreements weren't final yet. There could be some shift. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I don't know that there's going to be any changes as it relates to the numbers. I think the assessed value, which is the biggest part of it, was agreed upon.
Okay.
And so, if there are changes, I don't, I don't believe it would be to the actual assessed value of the properties.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul? Okay. Yes again. Um, Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Was that a no or a yes?
Mr. Jaeger voted no.
No.
No. No.
Okay, so 6, 6-1. Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to 9E, which is a call for a motion to approve Police Directive 203, Deadly Force and Discharge of Firearms by Police Personnel. Can I have a motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Read it. I guess if I have one quick question for the attorney. I know the last meeting, Randy said that it was being vetted and we're, everything's been looked over. So, it's good to go, Adam, I'm going to guess.
Yes, it's been, and everyone seems to be on the same page with this. So, that was, that was good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. 9F, a call for a motion to approve Police Directive 204, Use of Force. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'm sorry, who did the motion and second, please?
Eileen and Mike.
Eileen and Mike?
I didn't. No, I didn't.
I believe it was, it was Miss Halaho.
Helen and Mike?
No, I did not.
Oh, sorry. I thought you did.
I, that's, I don't know if I, because I threw my name in there. I just didn't know if I was before or after. That's all. Okay, so.
Looks like it was you, Nancy.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it was.
It's hard to hear.
Yes.
And, and Mike, right? Okay.
Yeah. Discussion? All right, hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to 10, other business. Do we have any other business?
I just have a question from the, from our discussion last month. It's the cloverleaf property. Did we find out, does the RDA own that? Or do we own that? And who's responsible for cutting the grass?
The RDA has title to the parcels, and we've been mowing it for about a thousand years.
Should, is that part of the agreement?
The concrete blocks you asked about, not belong to us.
Okay, so, is that part of the agreement when we gave it to the RDA that we would cut the grass? Okay. And are we going to move those concrete blocks when we're leaving them?
Well, they, no one really wants anyone back there, especially by like altering renewables of any kind, because there are test wells set up. And the first time they set up test wells, they were damaged. So, they were set up again, and they're hoping they're not going to get damaged. So, certainly we could move, but council won't move or want to, you know, wait until the test wells are removed.
We can wait. I'll bring it up again.
Okay.
Mr. Parker? Yes.
My dog is going crazy.
I have a question for Mr. Mitchell. What, what area did Helen just reference?
She was asking about the cloverleaf property.
Cloverleaf. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Unless there's, unless there's other business, we're going to move on to 11, which is Borough Officials.
I have a couple of questions. I'll be brief, if I may. The first, again, is, I guess it would be for Mr. Mitchell. Has there been any conversation with anybody, I guess in particular, Mr. Senator San Sero, with regards to the electric going out? I know that a few years back, they were trying to work on it, thinking that it was a state, a substation. And of course, after this last outage, it just doesn't seem to be getting any better. And of course, there's also thought that, we have many trees in town, and the trees can cause some of that obstruction. But has anybody said anything about the last outage, or whether anybody's trying to fix it, or?
No, I know the senator and just about all of his staff, but no, no one has, there's been no discussion about the Pico outage, no.
Okay. And then the second thing I have is, our employees, we have a policy, our employees, it's a behavior, it's under the behavior policy, was written some years ago, with regards to behavior on Facebook and comments and so forth for our employees, and how, you know, it's really important that they just not really be on it. My question is, should not those same behavior policies, should not that same behavior policy be applied to anybody who sits on a committee that we, that has been appointed by this borough? I mean, my feeling is, they represent the borough, and that foul, disgusting language, and should, you know, should not be tolerated by anybody that sits on a committee that is on any Facebook page. And I'm just wondering how, number one, first, how could we handle that? And number two, is this something that the rest of council feels, do they feel the same way I do, that those people represent the borough on no matter what committee they sit on?
Well, I'll yield to the solicitor on the law. But in terms of Borough's policies, I can tell you that the Borough does have a policy that applies to employees regarding use of social media. Now, that does not infringe upon their First Amendment right in order to express themselves using social media. That deals more with the use of social media when you're on Borough time and supposed to be working. It also deals with, you know, Borough business being discussed. But any Borough employee can go on social media and talk about pretty much whatever they want. As for boards and commissions, the folks that council appoints to boards and commissions, I'm not sure you can regulate their expression. But again, I'll yield to Adam on that. There is no policy that I'm aware of that exists in the Borough at this time that regulates the speech or expression of people who serve on boards and commissions.
No, it wasn't in the policy behavior that we, we had done before. So, I realize that they're, they're like a separate, a separate group. But, okay. I understand that the free speech thing comes in.
Adam, do you want to drive in on this?
I mean, as a rule of thumb, anything that's pending before someone is, is obviously something you want to steer clear of. But is it just whether the Borough, is the question whether the Borough can limit speech of people that are on boards or committees?
Yes. I guess, let, not, they can have a voice, but the total, the vulgarity and the foulness is what is really to be appalling. But I'm not saying that people can't speak. But there, there's been some really very disgusting posts recently. And so, that's, that's why I brought it up. Back when someone brought it to my attention. But I guess when they're on their own time, they can, I guess, I guess I was expecting more from committees, that they would take the opportunity to represent in a different way. And that's just not happening. So, once again, if we put it in the, in hands of the person using it, we can only hope that they behave differently. So.
I think what you might be referring to is some sort of civility oath or civility guide among the elected and appointed officials of the Borough. I know in other states, there are municipalities who have such things. I'm not familiar with any. In Pennsylvania, there might be some, but not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, I wasn't necessarily thinking we could take any action, but I just, maybe it's just sort of put it out there that it would be nice if all committee and, you know, members would think twice before they respond in some of the ways they've been responding. That's all. I mean, they do, they do, in a sense, represent us. I mean, they've been appointed to those thoughts. And it's, what does it say about us that we appoint people that, you know, behave in such a manner? So, that's, I said my piece. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Anyone else?
I just have another quick question. I know that back in March, you had created a job description for the code enforcement. Did that ever get posted?
No, I, I was asked to develop it and circulate it to council for consideration and discussion.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know where that stood. I remember reading it in the packet. Thanks.
Yep.
I didn't hear that last question, Scott.
She was asking about the job description a few months back that council had asked me to develop for a part-time code enforcement official.
Okay. And have, have you developed one or no?
Yes, I developed one within, I believe, a week's time and circulated it to council for review and discussion. But I don't think there's, that in a sense.
We didn't post it, we didn't post it anywhere, or.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we just, I believe if I remember it. Right. We didn't discuss it, nor direct him to post it, that we were creating a position.
Right.
Right. It was, it was being circulated for discussion purposes, I believe.
Right, at that point. Right, at that point, yes, okay. All right, I have one, if nobody else has anything. Uh, I've been asked to make a, a public service announcement about how important, uh, the census is to Morrisville. Census workers are going around visiting homes, uh, that are not in census records, uh, as submitting census information. They will leave, uh, a visit form with the information to complete online or by phone. The main focus is the number of people and ages in the household. Other questions are asked, but if you're not comfortable with, uh, an answer, uh, people can refuse. Uh, it is very important to the borough that everyone participate in the census. You can do it online at, uh, my census twenty, my, I'm sorry, my twentytwentycensus.gov or by calling one eight four four three three zero two zero two zero, two zero.
Ms. Parker, I believe that's also on our, is that also on a website, Scott? But I know it's on our channels.
Yeah.
So if you didn't, someone didn't get that, they can go there to reference it, right?
This person's main concern.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the cable TV channel, Facebook page, website, yeah.
I, now, as I was trying to say, I believe that they're visiting now and, uh, they just want people to, to fill out the forms, uh, online or, or call if need be, um, that these are people who haven't completed the, uh, the census already, so. And that's it, uh?
Ted, I, Ted, I have a question for you. How are they addressing the apartments? Cause you can't even get into them, do you know?
I, that's one of the reasons why I was asked, uh, to remind people about the census. Um, I, I don't know how they're actually getting in, if they're just leaving them at the door, um, but.
You have to get to one, you have to get to one door to get to ten places. I'm just wondering if they, uh, you know, could contact the, uh, the administrator or the, you know, the onsite manager to be able to help them with that, but I guess they'll figure that out. But, but that's, it's a lot of bodies that I think need to be counted. So, um, I, I would encourage them to talk to the manager about it.
I would encourage everybody to, uh, to participate. All right, I have a quick question for Scott, um, do we need to come back after the, uh?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, so, yeah, you're safe to adjourn, I believe.
Okay, uh, if nobody else has anything else to add, uh, under eleven, um, we're gonna go to twelve, which is, uh, to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes as always.
There's enthusiasm for adjourning.
Yes, there is. Um, how are we handling this with?